Everyone, this is Kristin Vincent, Chair of the Westboro School Committee. Today is Wednesday, January 19th, 2022. This meeting of the Westboro School Committee is called to order. Please stand if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Effective Wednesday, January 5th, 2022, the Westboro Board of Health requires that everyone, including fully vaccinated people, wear a mask in indoor public settings in Westboro. The masking requirement applies to all individuals aged two years and above. Masks are to be worn completely over a person's nose and mouth. This order is in effect until January 31st, 2022, and may be extended to a further date if the board deems necessary. I'd also like to notify everyone in the room with us tonight that this meeting is being recorded by Westboro TV. School committee meetings are available for remote viewing or listening on Westboro TV's government channels, Verizon 28 and Charter 192, and online on the Westboro TV YouTube channel. Thank you to Westboro TV for covering the broadcast tonight. We have with us at the meeting Superintendent Amber Bach, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Daniel Mayer, Director of Finance and Administration David Gordon, Vice Chair of the Westboro School Committee Steve Girret, School Committee Members Sarah Dulay, Lisa Edinburgh, and Rabu Nandan, our Student Representative Andrew Chen, and our Recording Secretary Jen Benton is taking the minutes remotely, and we have staff here from Westboro TV. I will quickly run through the agenda. We will have an approval of minutes from January 5th. We will hear from the Superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent, and the Director of Finance and Administration. We'll have school committee member reports, building project updates, citizens' requests. Then we'll hear an update on our preschool program and look at proposed tuition for the following school year and a projection on classes. We'll have a COVID update. We will review a preliminary school year calendar for the following school year. Can't believe we're looking at that already. We'll do an acceptance of a donation to the borough program, and we'll have an update on our capital project items, and then we will adjourn. We do not have a need for an executive session tonight. So we'll begin with an approval of minutes from January 5th, 2022 regular session.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 5th.
Thank you.
I actually had amended.
Oh, okay.
So I shouldn't second, or should I change the motion?
Why don't you change the motion?
I'm going to change the motion and make a motion for amending or approving the January 5th amended minutes.
Second time.
Any discussion? Just pull your mic a little closer.
Okay. Under COVID update, I wanted to just correct that the Superintendent did not say there were 12 in-school transmissions. She said that there were 12 cases at the high school that day. Three or four cases had symptoms at school and were sent home after testing positive. And it's understandable that that was confusing in the minutes because listening to it, it did sort of sound like, you know, it sort of sounded that way, but it really was meant it had a different meaning behind it, so it's understandable. That was all.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the minutes? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So that's five to zero. Those minutes are approved, so thank you for that. I will turn it over to our Superintendent.
Thank you very much. Good to see all of you tonight. I think the core area of focus will be given through the various reports that I do tonight and how things are going and kind of on the ground level with schools. The area that I want to make note of tonight is next week we have the Budget Summit with the FinCom and the Select Board, and that is basically for the majority of the day on Thursday. I think it begins at 8:30. I'm not sure. We have to look at the time. We are presenting at 1:30. The school budget chunk is coming up at 1:30, and so I think in the past you have attended, you know, for the majority of the session so that you can hear all the budget presentations. We are working, Dave and Daniel and I are working on a fresh presentation that will bring, that will give a kind of a summation of all the various stages as well as information around the budget. I think that if you feel there are items that you want us to emphasize, please email or call me so we can kind of think about that. I anticipate that we will share a draft of that presentation to you probably Tuesday evening, and so right now we're kind of developing some graphs. Again, you've heard Dave speak about the fact that we want good data benchmarks against, you know, relevant other-like communities on our comparison list. So, you know, that takes time, but we are working on that, and, you know, you've seen Daniel's data in the past around benchmarks for performance, so they're pulling those together so we can kind of create some information. I think in preparation for this meeting, in the past, it's been a while since, you know, we had the full organizational structure last year. It was a little different. I think looking at past presentations of the budget staged in your budget book are helpful just to kind of remember the talking points, and then I think, you know, bringing that budget book or just kind of being up to date just so you feel like you follow their questions that they have for us. Typically, you know, Daniel and Dave and I will answer questions, but the floor is certainly open to open conversation, so you are participants in that when we come to present, and certainly, you know, there's been open conversation in the past. So I think it's good to prepare. Tonight, I will talk about the capital items within the agenda later in the meeting. My focus there is just going to be a look at how those items are going to continue to evolve between now and town meeting in terms of the finalization of the capital process. You have ARPA funding right now, which is also at play, and it's making that capital funding a little more complex. So I'll talk about that later in the agenda, but I want to make sure we talk about all of that tonight because in terms of open conversation, they will expect us as well to present our capital items that are coming through the capital process. So that's my update for now, and I look forward to the rest of the agenda.
Thank you. Daniel?
Good evening. I'd like to give just one update of the, a few of you were participating in the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration on Monday. We, as you know, made sort of a last-minute adjustment to go all virtual for the program. The program was very well attended. We had over 120 households tune in, and there were multiple people at several of the households, so the participation was very strong, and I thought the event was lovely, went off well. It's a collective effort over a course of the year to find a speaker and put on the essay contest and arrange it all, and the two student speakers, I thought, did a fantastic job.
They were amazing.
Yeah, they really were. As you know, we had a Gibbons representative and a high school representative, and they were both very impassioned and articulate, and I also thought Dr. Jenkins did a great job, and so I really enjoyed the event.
Yeah, and I think, so there was going to be a story time, and they turned it into like a story walk, and is that what's out in front of the high school? Because I got some questions about what is that?
So that is available for people to enjoy. You can take the walk through the outdoor area and enjoy reading the story. It guides you from one section to the next, and the plan is that, excuse me, that that display will then relocate to another section, another area in Westboro, and continue kind of a journey where there will be several spaces where we use outdoor endowment area for people to both interact with the story and enjoy being outside.
Yeah, I thought that was a really clever way to have that on display and make it interactive and outside, and yeah, it's nice. Thank you. Thanks. Dave?
Actually, no major updates tonight. I would just reiterate pretty much everything Superintendent Bach said related to the Budget Summit. Still trying to gather some financial data from peer districts. As I mentioned in the past, some of the timeliness is a little bit different from how fast we move through the budget process versus other towns, but I am receiving some input from them related on recommendations for their budget increases. So our peer districts have been supportive, but again, I'm trying to get some of the most relevant data so that we have some really strong fundamentals to compare against what we're doing on the financial aspect, not just based on the achievements. And that's it for now.
Okay, thank you. Andrew, I'm going to turn it over to you for your report.
Thank you. Okay.
Just to make sure that microphone's on, Sarah.
Yeah. So last Monday, the high school hosted the Unity Walk, which was like a parade around part of the school after school. Students and teachers participated, and some students even made like posters, and they were hanging up, and we had a few speeches, five students and teachers, and it was really nice. And then afterwards, the posters were collected and they were put up around the school. Yeah, and also, on January 12th, the high school had their first open forum, which we plan on continuing once every month, and it was basically a chance after school for like students to come and talk to Mr. Callahan and to ask questions, post suggestions on anything, anything about how to improve the school community. There's a lot of fun. There was some discussion about the lunch selection, but there's also a lot of important things that were addressed. One was that there was one suggestion to make some, sorry, to make some excused absences for mental health days for students. I think that's a really good idea, especially, I talked to a lot of other students, and they thought this is like a really important point because it focuses on students' mental health, especially around midterms, which is starting tomorrow to next Tuesday. And yeah, I just thought I wanted to bring that up. For midterms, everything, I'm sure you've all heard it by now, but everything is the same except that it will be counted less and it'll be put as a quarter-to grade. From my personal experience, I have some classes where I'm just taking the midterm normally, and I have other classes where they're in my project base, and I have other classes where I'm taking a test, but it's going to count as like participation, so it won't actually be graded. So there's just some changes there, and yeah, that's all I have to report for today.
All right, thank you. Thanks. Sarah?
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone too, also, if you tune into Westboro TV, you can see the Unity Walk is posted up there and also the Martin Luther King Praise and Cheers. And so if you missed any of those or any other sporting event, concert, or thing that went on, I'm sure Westboro TV captured it. So thank you, Westboro TV, as always. Wednesday, February 2nd is going to be the Winter Walk to School, so the K-8 schools usually participate in that with our partner, Safe Routes to School. So look for flyers and Safe Routes to School materials in your virtual backpacks, and feel free to walk to school on Wednesday, February 2nd, weather permitting, and usually we extend it to the whole month. So if you walk to school or take another mode of transportation other than bus or car in the month of February, you have participated, so keep that in mind.
Yeah. Rabu?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, thank you. Lisa?
I don't have anything tonight except for I just wanted to respond to the excused absences for mental health days. I hope that they're strongly considering it, just simply, but there could be follow-up with that where guidance counselors reach out to the student during that day to make sure there's a connection between what's happening on that day, but I think that's a great suggestion, and I hope that, are you planning on feedback? I'm sorry to ask you questions right off. Are you getting feedback on that after, like, you know, a follow-up? I'm just curious of the process.
Yeah, so I'm sure Callahan, he was taking notes during the meeting. I'm sure he's going to follow up with that and see if that's like a possible or feasible thing that we can implement in the future.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that very much. That's all.
Thank you. I don't have anything, so I'm just going to turn it over to you, Steve, for your school committee report and your building report.
Okay. So of the 700 punchless items that I mentioned last week that continue at the failed school, we're now down to 56 items from the 700. Most of those items are items that deal with previously ordered materials which had been delayed due to supply chain issues, and many of these items are anticipated in the next couple of weeks. However, there will likely be some that won't arrive until March, at least based on the current schedule of delivery of items, but in the most part, most of the things that are required in the school are complete, and commissioning of those items continues as well as training for the maintenance of those items as well. As far as the schedule for the project concerns, obviously with winter conditions in play now, that the site will likely go quiet until March or early April when the weather improves because the remaining work at the site, now that the old school has been removed, then they're likely to finish removal of all items, including the old school foundations, by the end of this week or early next week. And so the remaining work is moving soil material that was stored off-site back to the site to fill in the old foundation and to raise the grade in the area of the old school, which is to become the bus loop and additional parking. Beyond that, during the period of good weather in the spring, will be the recreation of the playing field that used to be in the lower part of the site, as well as tree planting and screening, which will also occur in the spring. So we're coming down to the project's end, even though it will take a while, since we're obviously going to go to sleep for a couple of months now. And then in the spring is when the project restarts, primarily delivering material to the site for grading purposes, final paving and odds and ends associated with site work. So pretty much the project is neared completion so far, knock on wood. We still have a contingency left, and we're still on budget. As far as other capital projects are concerned, the Sprinkle Project at Hastings continues, and with the work occurring after school and on weekends. It's progressing to the point where we will be doing certain tests and being able to turn over the system, which will protect the school in the case of a fire, and it's the only building left, I think, in town that didn't have a sprinkler. So with that, that's my report for today.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Girret? Thank you. It's good to hear about the progress there. We'll move on to citizens' requests. Is there anyone here that wishes to make a statement to the school committee? Yep, come on up.
Good night.
Hello. You're familiar with this, but name and address, and you have three minutes to share your thoughts.
Boyd Compton, 8 Water Street. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the emergency use authorization for the COVID vaccine, and I don't think the way that Pfizer and the FDA and these other people that are involved in the money end of this thing, I don't think the emergency is ever going to end because for the emergency use authorization, it must be an emergency. There can be no early treatments. This is the hydroxychloroquine or the ivermectin and zinc type of thing that they outlawed, taken away physicians' licenses for prescribing it and this kind of thing. And also with the emergency use authorization, they get full liability protection, Pharma, Moderna, Pfizer. So anyways, I'd like to say that you don't need a test to tell you you're sick. Everybody seems to be talking about, let's get the test, 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 test for the nurses, and we get the patch memo kind of business where it's going to allow to do it at home. So I look at this as just to keep the fear ramped up. You can see like they're out of tests at the CVS and that kind of thing. Everybody's running around trying to get tests and this kind of thing, but once again, you don't need a test to tell you you're sick. If you're symptomatic, stay at home. If you have the symptoms, then you know you're sick. You can be PCR positive for a week to three months after you get the Wu, after you get the Omicron or the Delta, you can still show up PCR positive. If you don't want to show up PCR positive on the test, then you can do the hydrogen peroxide nasal washes, and then you'll get a negative PCR test. And once again, I think the, there was a thing in the Wall Street Journal the other day, opinion piece that's saying like maybe we should let the Omicron run its course since it's not nearly as lethal as the Delta, and so just get rid of the masks because now you guys are chasing the N95s or whatever the other masks are that are more effective than the cloth mask because we see that from the data that the cloth masks don't do anything, and neither do the social distancing with the Omicron that's got an RO of 17 versus like the Delta of three. So anyways, probably my time's up.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. All right, we will move on in our agenda to the preschool program update. Yeah, so I'd like to welcome Michelle Palermo, Director of the Westboro Early Childhood Center.
Thank you. So Michelle's going to take some time, and it has evolved as a nice piece of practice to, Sheri did a lot of updating, Sheri Stevens, of the preschool and the evolution of that program, and now in its establishment, a chance for Michelle to come and provide some highlights to you. And this annual time when she's doing the tuition review as part of action is a nice time for her to come and to share some highlights. So I will turn it over to her. She will both, you have a memo regarding her thoughts on tuition and planning for the year, and she'll highlight that, but first we'll let her do an overview.
Thank you. Just to make sure you're talking into the microphone so everyone at home can hear you too. Thanks.
It's great to be back. I didn't get to come.
I didn't get to come and give you an update last year, so I'm happy to be here tonight. I've included lots of pictures from this year, so I hope you enjoy those. And I'll try to tell you what they represent. Obviously, this is our most recent snowstorm and kids playing outside, which they absolutely adore. So I'll just start by giving you an overview of our enrollment this year. We received 225 applications for the program. We continue to receive applications daily, pretty nearly daily. At this time, there are 35 students active on the waiting list. So they continue to call us, are there openings. Our current enrollment is at 141. Generally, by the end of the year, because you know that we add students as the year goes on, we usually end around 150, 160. So just giving you an idea of where we are. We have 54 students who are attending our full-day program, which runs from 9:00 to 2:30, and 87 attending either an AM or a PM session. We have had a significant increase in the number of families who are looking for full day. So we actually ended up this year having four full-day classrooms and three half-day classrooms. Of our enrolled students, 74% come from homes where a language other than or in addition to English is spoken. So that's been a real area of focus for us, since we have lots of children who are speaking more than one language. 14% of our students are students with special education needs. And then, as you know, we are responsible for the screening and the evaluation of children ages 3 to 5. And to date, we have screened or evaluated approximately 44 students and probably will process an additional 25 to 30 by the end of the school year. You can see a couple of pictures here. This is from one of our first units, which was family. And this is taking care of babies. So that's a key concept that we talk about as we read books and as the kids are playing. My clicker's not working. Oh, I have to point it at your computer?
Hold on. Try it now. There you go.
So an overview of staffing. So we're running seven classrooms right now. So we have 17 co-teaching teams, so regular ed and special education teachers, 14 paraeducators, three speech and language pathologists, two working primarily in our classrooms, and one providing, doing part of our initial evaluations, as well as our students who walk in. We have an occupational therapist, a BCBA, and our referral coordinator, an administrative assistant, and the director, myself. As I mentioned, we have four full-day classrooms and three that are operating a morning and then an afternoon session. And then we also have 13 students who either come in for weekly appointments a couple of times a week or we see them at a community preschool program in Westboro. So sometimes we'll go and provide services there. And the pictures that you're looking at are pictures of children doing their storm paintings. So you can see, we have, we did a lot of talking about snowstorms and rainstorms, and they're using colors and recreating those. So programmatically, I mentioned that supporting our English language learners has been a core area of focus for us this year. The team really has worked, taken on a leadership project to think about how we can develop what our baseline system of assessment and progress monitoring should look like. And so that was work that we did last year. So this year, we're really piloting it along with targeted enrollment of English language learners who otherwise would not have access to early childhood education. In addition, we continue to expand and modify our inclusive, our co-teaching model and our inclusive classrooms. The special education team has been really working and we have basically created a shared library around the three curricula that we use that includes modified books, video models, visual supports, and it's shared among all the classrooms. So there's been a lot of work, really, this is our third year with the curricula that we've selected. And we have, I think, really where we are right now in our implementation is it's very much about refinement and expansion and enhancement. The team really has it down. You know, it's something that they really value, the ability to kind of work across classrooms and over the whole program. So it's exciting work. And you can see some of the things that children are working on here. These are, so the top picture is exploring the concept of absorbency. So what will be, what will absorb water? What will repel it? And then in the bottom, that's an example of a stability challenge. So they're building structures and they're trying to figure out how stable they are. You can see those, they've got some fans that they made, use different things to try to knock over the buildings. I'm just sharing some fun pictures with you. Again, this is an amazing, one amazing example of a structure that children built while we were talking about neighborhoods. And same at the bottom. And then making piñatas that went along with one of the stories that we read called Horeya Piñata. This is, these are examples of caring for animals. So after caring for babies, then we're talking about caring for animals.
God, look how cute that is.
We had some special guests that we took very good care of.
Is that caring for the superintendent?
I got my hair and my nails done at the salon. And they were very, very engaged. And I got the blow-dry, I got the comb out, I got the nails.
I got the pizza.
You got pizza.
They were serving up, I'm looking at the menu there and they're very attentive.
They were very clear about the process.
So cute. Know how to treat our guests.
So another significant update. We really, this is a year that we have had really a lot of applicants, as I mentioned, and continue to have a good number on our waiting list who continue to reach out to us and ask if we have space. And we don't have, we really don't have a lot of movement within our classrooms. We have some, but not a lot. So I did propose to Superintendent Bach and to Sherry Stevens that we make use of the last classroom that we have, which is not currently being used, and that we open it up as a temporary addition in order to respond to the community interest. We did check in with people on our waiting list, and we probably have, right now, 15 families who said yes, they would absolutely be interested in a full-day program. So we intend to contract with a teacher and a paraeducator, so not our exact model, but really to meet the community need we know how, or and interests. We know how important in-person learning is and we want to be able to be responsive to that. So that's exciting. The tuition that we will collect will offset the costs of those temporary hires. And we'll continue to assess community interest as we roll out the application for next year, which we plan to do in a couple of weeks. We usually do that in February. We have what, we have an email notification list on the website for people who are interested in knowing when the application gets released. And right now, there are 74 names on that list. So we anticipate that we're still going to have a lot of interest in enrolling in the program. We will only, of the 141 students, probably, I think, just about half of them will go to kindergarten. So we will have 70-ish spots available. So already, right now, we could be fully enrolled. It doesn't always work out that way because sometimes people want something we don't have because they get to choose. So examples of building habitats in the pictures. So these are places where woodland animals live. That's another concept that we've been talking about. So to the proposal for next year, I'm proposing that we maintain our current tuition for the '22, '23 school year. We did, the last time we increased tuition was in 2019, when we expanded from four days to five days. I think it's probably a good time to do another tuition review. So we look at, you know, other communities who run the same kinds of programs. We look within Westboro in terms of what tuition looks like. And I would propose that we do that next year. And when I come back to give you an update in January of '23, I can make recommendations about tuition increases at that time.
So two pieces around that to complement that planning. I think we want to give people a window of opportunity. You know, we've got a lot of people suffering from inflation. We know that there's a lot going on still with COVID. We want to provide a long window for people planning preschool to know and understand that that cost isn't stagnant. But we really want to be able to have in front of you a thoughtful, you know, data set so you can look at that. And Michelle did a very nice job. The last time, she pulled together the comparisons for us so that we could make a thoughtful increase and be fully transparent with people that they anticipate that, you know, in the '23, '24 school year, that we would be looking towards an increase. And then I guess one of the things that I've asked her to consider is should there be an annual staged increase that we build into the model that's reasonable against inflation or the growth in cost of the general offset that continues to get smaller against the increase in the salaries over time? So again, a model you know and recognize that you hire faculty who continue to move through the steps and lanes. If your tuition framework is stagnant, you pick up the gap in salary, it becomes one of those pieces that can become, you know, a part that has impact that we want to keep a balance on. So I think next year's timing for that would be important.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for the presentation. It was good. Couple of things. There are 35 students still, kids still in waiting list. What's your criteria for selection, you know, between, is it first come, first served, or is it?
It is first come, first served. Now, parents can tell us they want full day, they want AM, they want morning, they want afternoon. So we track that. And if they have said, I'll take any of those or I only want this, and that's what opens up, we just go to the next name on the list and that's who we reach out to.
Got it, thanks. My second question is, if, I understand the inflation and hardships. If there's a chance that we can have a tuition increase, is there any way we can convert those halftime classes to full-time with new hires and, you know, literally meet the demand out there in the community?
So last year, we, when we do, so our enrollment, our application enrollment process, first, we reach out to our returning students who are not eligible for kindergarten, and we allow them to choose first because they are coming back for another year, and we put them in their spots. Then we look at new applicants and we put them, we fill in what we have openings for. Last year, when we did that, I could see that there were significantly more people who wanted full day than there were half-day. So we actually converted, in the middle of the summer, one of the classrooms that we thought was going to be a half-day into a full day. So we do try to base the way the classrooms roll out on what parents want. But parents continue to want both things. We have a good number of parents that really just want the half-day program. And we want to be able to, you know, serve as many children as possible. That does allow us to serve, you know, children in the morning and in the afternoon. So it's always a balancing act. But I would say that, for the most part, we, this is really the first year that we've had such a significant increase in the number of people who have wanted full day. Usually, it's roughly, we're able to pretty much accommodate. We always have a waiting list of probably 15 to, 10 to 15 people, usually. And sometimes, we cycle through that because people move. That's generally when we have openings.
And you would, I mean, you can't, we couldn't unroll all of those half-days and move them to full because you have an eight-classroom cap. So the preschool, in its assessment and in the design and the trajectory of percentages for what special education support needs to be, that was a responsive build level for the preschool. I think, and to Michelle's points around the balance of half-day and full-day, which is within the framework of preschool responsive kind of programming, we can continue to strike the balance. And we've opened, you know, we've staged in a couple of those classrooms from 6 to 7 and now through the close of this year to 8 to look at, you know, where that, kind of what that does to our programming.
Other questions, Raghu?
No, thanks.
Other questions, Sarah?
I was thinking.
Okay. So do you anticipate, then, keeping that eighth classroom open in the fall? Or will that depend on, and I know you just explained how you do the enrollment, but is, are you anticipating that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we'll continue to look at the numbers of applications that we have coming in. I mean, right now, it seems like we're breaking even, in a way, but it's early. I mean, people generally start applying in February, but between February and June, we get a lot more applications. So I think it's definitely something I would keep, we would keep our eye on and continue to have a conversation about.
So just to remind us all of budget process. So, you know, if we maintained these, where the tuition covers the two positions we bring in this year, we could sustain it through next year with it being that design. But the design of the preschool model, being a special ed framework, where you have then the special education teacher and the additional supports, means that there are additional positions that would have to be funded. And right now, we are at a place of no new positions. We are looking at the potential grant offsets in Sherry's framework of planning to see if she could sustain them into that next year. And then we look at the trajectory of the impact of the overall expenditures that are being pulled against the tuition preschool account. So again, there's a tension there for, you know, how much it covers and the pressure of that balance there. So I feel good about the plan that we can get a responsive look at, you know, young three-year-olds, little three-year-olds sitting on a waiting list still, that we want to get into some programming. I'm very excited for us to be able to do that through the close of the year and then move forward from there.
I have some questions. I was curious about, so when you say that the costs are an offset, does that mean they don't fully cover the two, the one teacher and the one para that you would add?
This year, no, that would, the tuition this year would cover the cost of that programming through the close of the year.
So my other question is that it sounds as if there's two teachers per co-team plus two paras per classroom.
Yes.
If this classroom only has one teacher and one para, is that meaning that you've chosen a different population to not need as much support?
So I think we would, what we proposed is this would be a different model.
Okay.
And it would just be to meet the needs that, or the interest that is out there and get children, you know, five months of schooling that they, that their parents are very, very interested in. So we would keep it as, it would not be a co-talk classroom. We would not integrate children with special education needs into that classroom. We could potentially have children who are just serviced by a speech and language pathologist because we do have a speech and language pathologist who could go in and out of classrooms. But it would primarily, the design would just be to move those kids off our waiting But it would primarily, the design would just be to move those kids off our waiting list and into programming.
Okay, so another question is you had said at some point that the 141 could end up as 150, 160. Does that mean you're adding students to the other seven classrooms at some, or?
Yes, yes, we always do. We reserve, because we are responsible for determining whether children require special education as they turn three over the course of the year, we're always adding students. So we, we reserve some spots in every classroom and we continue to add them.
So that makes me feel like there's a balance between this eighth class and that answer, which is you're not excluding.
No, there's separate, there's separate responsive programming.
That's important.
Yeah.
Another question I had is, is the 74% a major change from the past, that number? Has it gone up excessively in the last two years or?
I mean, I think anecdotally it's not, but this is really the first year that we actually did an assessment using a tool in order to determine that. But I think anecdotally, we have, you know, we certainly have a population of students where English is one of the languages spoken at home.
And when you say you do the assessments for special education, are you also doing assessments for English language learning for starting in kindergarten at that point? Is that part of the, I know, I read that you are changing the curriculum almost in like three parts, a three part English language. Did I read that correctly? Of English language learners, implementation of an assessment and am I reading the wrong thing? That it's an assessment and progress monitoring and piloting targeted enrollment? So what you're really doing is creating a new program around the needs of the children that are there? Is that correct?
We are, we are within our existing programs strengthening our approach to teaching the English language learners that we have. That's primarily. So first we determined who they were and tried to put them into a level according to really the WE DAS standards for early childhood education. So we kind of did a baseline assessment and, and tried to put children at different levels to guide our instruction.
So when you look at, and when you look at to complement that, I think it's a nice, again, you have a program that's now in existence three years and you're starting to see those layers of depth coming in. Like you can see the layers of depth in the curriculum differentials as well. The materials are enhanced, the data collections have improved, the targeted differentiation is very, very strong. And as a branch of that work, Michelle's now reached into looking at not, one of the important targets for students that speak multiple languages is making sure that they don't get identified as having any learning needs. And what they need is language immersion and the opportunity to have the trajectory to develop their language skills. And so at the same time, you might have a student who appears to potentially be struggling in their home language, therefore you're monitoring them and you might have different interventions, but all of it's just part of strong immersive preschool support. And so they're just, you know, layering in more and more targeted assessments to make sure that we're then getting that instructional modeling where we want it to be. So I couldn't be more pleased with the quality of programming growth that Michelle and her team have brought to the program. It really is a showcase for us as a district and the opportunity to immerse our three year olds in the community in it brings them into kindergarten in a much stronger place. And especially the language learners who need that early immersion of just the rich language of preschool. So I think it's, you know, an exciting development in her work.
No, it shows you the value of childhood, early childhood education. Kate Johnyhugh, who's running for state rep, I'm bringing her up because she, one of her goals is about universal pre-K. So it's really interesting to see the good work that's being done, you know, that could be modeled in many ways, may I mention? And I'm also in agreement that that incremental increase seems really necessary budget wise to pay for the programming. So it's, I just, I was asking the questions simply so that people would hear, you know, what is it really about? And thank you for the presentation. It was, it keeps us informed of good things that are happening at that level.
It feels good when we can get back into the core presentations that give you the talking points and the depth of knowledge that you can speak to the kind of the programming that attaches to our budgeting. And so I think, you know, people understanding that the interface of good tuition base with salary and budgeting into the combination of a strong program. So you probably want to take a vote to maintain the tuition for next year and then we'll bring forward the study, but I think you definitely want to vote, which is an action to maintain tuition as it's currently running.
I'll move that we maintain the tuition as it is for the next year.
I'll second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Five in favor of keeping tuition the same and then to go through the review process. I think it's a, it's a good time to look at that, look at our other communities and similar programs and kind of what it costs out there to.
And if you haven't had a chance to visit the preschool, you should consider emailing Michelle and she would love to have you visit and get a chance to be immersed in the live, vibrant curriculum and fun of preschool.
We get pizza?
You could.
But you might have to like build a Ford or get your hair cut.
Trying to think about what units coming up. You might have to do some laundry. That might be coming up. We might put you to work, but.
And Michelle, I know that there's a specific website set up just for the Early Childhood Center, so how would someone find the website to get more information?
So they can actually go to the district's website and under the four families tab, there is a tab that says preschool and you can just click on that and all the information is there.
Perfect, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Michelle. Good to have you here as always.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, take care. Thanks for being here. Right.
All right, so moving on in our agenda, we are to the COVID update.
So thank you. I'll keep, I'm going to do three, three highlight pieces tonight. I'm going to give you a brief update on our current status numbers, which is just an important benchmark as we kind of manage where we are with the virus and numbers. I'm then going to, Daniel's got an interesting graph on attendance, which we'll take a look at. And then I would like to provide an update to you on my proposed kind of next steps planning for moving forward to manage the change in protocols that have been announced in the last 48 hours. I attended a webinar today and I want to step you through the next planning stages for us as a district. And tonight kind of being a first step and an update and a couple of things that we want to present. So those will be the things we'll do. We'll keep the discussion tight and open it up for any conversation. So you see the weekly numbers. I mean, I think the trajectory is you get a little bit of a bell curve there. You see that typically our numbers are spread out across the district. You see our two largest schools with our two largest numbers, 46 at the high school and 38 at Mill Pond. You've seen kind of a couple little blips. A couple of weeks ago Armstrong's numbers were up and then they've come kind of, you know, back down to within range and then Hastings was kind of up a little bit. A total of 136 cases currently across district, 20 staff across the range of all faculty members and again, rotating out, accessing time to get better and then coming back to work. When you look at the close contact numbers, it gives you a sense of how the trajectory of close contact calling and the cycle of that work has really kind of outlived the trajectory of its usefulness in terms of scope and capacity for us. Many, many districts have already abandoned contact tracing and work at the building level to do that level of communication and have said to many, you know, many of them have been stating, if you're attending school and you're out in public, you need to assume you might well be a close contact and monitor for symptoms and actively be engaged in recognizing that's a part of life in terms of the school community and our community at large. So we have not yet done that. Westboro has maintained the practice of our test and stay protocols and our contact tracing and we have continued the implementation of those protocols. And I will speak to that when I look at, you know, next steps. So I think it's interesting to also then turn on and to bring up the attendance graph, which looks at kind of the impact in terms of kind of overall students who might be out sick or home as a close contact or quarantining or held out because they were anxious, all those things, right? So when you look at the attendance, I think it's a really interesting graph. So the top line is the total complete district wide attendance cycle. And then you see each of the schools. So about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, you had the high school peak at just under 2,000 absences. And then you can see that they've dropped down to much more typical numbers.
200 absences.
What?
You said 2,000.
Oh, so 200, sorry, not 2,000, 200. And you see the other graphs kind of following a typical trend where they were all up similarly during different peaks and then showing a downward trend. So we're going to continue to, that means we have more kids back at school, you have a better, stable attendance and, you know, we'll continue to track that against just kind of the general responsiveness to which of those are related to COVID illness, absences, and again, you know, any other form of absence. This is just the complete, I was out of school, you know, data. So I think it's just kind of an interesting graph. All right. So the next piece of data is you see, you know, obviously the increase in numbers that we've all been watching, tracking, talking about. And today, you guys are so funny, you love that graph. Do you have questions about the graph before we move on?
Well, yeah, I mean, I didn't, I didn't make the graph and so you can see the X, the X axis is not self intuitive.
Yeah.
The Y axis is, I mean, I do know that, you know, it's a five day moving average and I think we're looking at zero days to 80 days. But like, you know, it would probably be better if we had on that, that access, like the actual dates.
Yes, we could do that.
But it never, nevertheless.
Scott did this for fun for us and then we liked it, so we thought we'd show it to you. So if you want to refine, we're happy to refine it, but it's a simple graphic for tonight.
Leave it to Andrew and Steve.
You know that the axes are supposed to be labeled on any graph.
What's that, Andrew?
I happen to have a statistics midterm coming up. So if you need any graphs done, just send me the data.
It's a case study to like fix the graph.
I will give it, we will have him, we will have Andrew redo the graph.
I have several graphs that I need for next week.
We'll give you some, LaDita.
There you go.
I love it.
Otherwise you interpret it for what you want it to be, you know?
Yeah, no, no, I hear you, I hear you. It's not going up anymore. How about that? I think that.
As Daniel said, the X axis is not intuitive.
Yes, no, I hear you.
At least not to me anyway.
I think most people, but on a serious note, I think people would wonder, how is that affecting the education of those students who are out and what is the process in each of the different schools? I think people would wonder that.
I mean, it totally depends. Those absences are varied. I mean, you know, when we came back from vacation, we had people that held their kids out because they were anxious. And I was like, that's a personal choice, but we're not, you know, you, school is in person and you need to return and you'll have work to make up. And, you know, I think those families cycled through the time that they needed to kind of make decisions and feel like they could return to school and have. And then because you saw then the peak of students, if you have 136 kids with COVID, they're going to have to be out five days. So, you know, or longer if they, if they needed to be, but most of them are cycling through their five days and returning. So those are handled as any other absences are and makeup work is given and teachers do what they are able to help kids do to make up ground. They can access Google Classroom where a lot of our faculty do tend to place work, but we're not running a platform like we did, you know, in the year before. So all of that is status quo to what we've been doing all year. But I think, you know, I think teachers find it, I think it's more on the user, on the preparation side of our work. It can create a fragmentation that you have more kids coming and going and you're trying to make decisions around the pacing of your core curriculum and when you're going to be prepped for a midterm. And if you were missing four kids versus if you were missing eight or nine kids, it changes the trajectory of your planning. So those are the complications of the world we're living in with our industry and it can create a sense of fragmentation. I think our faculty is working really hard to be responsive to that. It's the kind of stuff that they work on in teams and have tried to, again, one of the reasons the high school pulled the pressure off of the percentage of the weight of those midterms. So I think you're seeing the district continue to be responsive to recognizing for what some can be invisible impacts of just the variability in attendance. So it seems to be trending back in a direction where it's stabilizing again. That's very good news for faculty. Certainly I would imagine that if we get to a place where, you know, again, it hits a new, a new kind of stability, we can pick up pace again.
Seems to indicate the mobility of the, of the population. You look at the younger grades, they're much lower than the older kids, if you will, to get around. That's number one. But what is interesting is that if you look at Gibbons relative to the unmaskings in December, it's lower than, than others.
Yeah.
Where, where they still had their masks. So.
Yeah.
It does tell us some things, even if we can't read what the axis is.
Yeah, no, no, there's all sorts of things about data and just discussions of the numbers that are interesting and, you know, they're all kind of hypotheses at this point. You know, we've, we haven't tried to be a group that spent a lot of time looking at, you know, too much of those. We need to more have planning in place to be responsive and that's where we've stabilized ourself. But certainly Gibbons numbers, you know, when you have those students who are on the more mobile side as high schoolers and involved in a lot, numbers have been lower. I think, and again, you have to look at percentages and scalability and the size of the building, but you also then have more unvaccinated in those younger students in a later cycle before they completed vaccinations. So there's, you know, there's all these variables, too many variables to come up with a clear hypothesis in my mind. But I think in terms of responsiveness, our programming has continued to be very stable so that we can maintain strong schooling. That's our mission. And I think, you know, shout out to our staff and to our families working collaboratively together, we've been able to maintain that. So now we turn towards, I think, the next important piece. And I think, Dana, if you open up that document, I'll scan through it a little bit in talking points. So the state announced DESE and DPH working collaboratively, acting together. And actually I was in a webinar with a joint meeting of the directors of the Department of Public Health and DESE today where we looked together at the plan to move forward in the announcement that came out towards moving to at home testing and a transition away from active test and stay at the classroom level and quarantine and contact tracing. So the direction of the state and following as Connecticut has done and Vermont and New Hampshire also exploring, have moved to provide at home test kits to all faculty and students to test once a week and then monitor for symptoms. And if they are symptomatic, they can also test with the nurse at school using the symptomatic based testing and the combination of those two maintain actively monitoring where we are while moving away from the contact tracing. And there's an interesting note there in their percentage that, you know, of all of the vast amounts of in school test and stay and pooled testing, you have between a 0.7 and 1.5% of secondary transmission rate or picking up any type of positive tests. So you see, you know, 98% of the test and stay stuff you're pulling through is all negative. So is it a valuable monitor when the at home test structure provides probably the same responsive capture window of, of positive cases? So again, you're widening your net by moving to an at home test model because you're testing for both vaccinated and unvaccinated. It's open to all. So currently the test and stay is only for unvaccinated. It's not for vaccinated students. So it's leaving out of the pool a chunk of people who again, might be indeed, you know, carrying COVID at a level at which it would detect it if they were self-testing. So you're expanding your pool of testing to include all vaccinated people as well if they opt in and you're, you're shifting some of your focus, moving away from contact. if they opt in, and you're, you're shifting some of your focus, moving away from contact tracing. We remain able to use symptomatic-based testing, it's a requirement of being in the program. So you're not doing the whole class test and stay model, but if somebody is symptomatic, they can test on-site and get a responsive data on the test to act appropriately. And then we move forward towards kind of a new structural set of tasks to maintain. I, I am applying to the state, there's a cycle of windows that open and close in terms of just how quickly you can move. If we apply by the end of this week, early next week, I think they gave me a date, we would receive testing materials for faculty as of the 24th, so they could begin the following week. And they're guaranteeing then the delivery of testing materials for students who opt in with delivery the week through the 31st. And once we receive those materials, you know, move them home to families that have selected to participate and begin the new model the following week. In so doing, the, the direction of the district is that after, on the day you receive your test materials to rotate home to families, you end your contact tracing and quarantining structure. So until you're holding your materials and getting ready to shift them home into that testing model, you don't move out of your contact tracing or quarantining or test and stay framework. So there's no way to provide relief for our faculty, families, and people that feel the trajectory of the calling structure and the contact tracing, you know, has moved beyond its capacity to be meaningful for us, or manageable. So there's two pieces there. You know, families getting three or four calls to say they might, their child might be a close contact is, you know, not garnering the attention from people that it should, and that now we need to move to the at-home model. So I have sent in the preliminary survey to say that we want to participate. Tomorrow, I plan to meet with the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, which is, again, that parent group that comes together to give advice and information and thoughts. We'll all discuss this with them and hear their initial feedback. And then I'll start with faculty, we'll send them a form tomorrow allowing them to opt in, and then they would receive testing materials by the end of the week on the 24th. And at the same time, we would run a parallel model to make a form available to families to indicate an interest in participating. And it moves us forward. So first step is just to gather the data of interest and opting in, and from there, at the same time in a parallel model, be able to continue conversations with people. I was in the meeting today, the Director of the Board of Health attended as well, and I've updated Judy Noonan Head Nurse, so we'll all start working together on just implementation, and then a new FAQ to families. So those are the early kind of things that need to happen. It's a little bit of a fast-moving train, but that seems to be the methodology that's happened at each turn of these transitions. You can opt in later, but you have to stay in your current structure until then. So I think the first action is to apply. If you scroll down there, Daniel, and again, this document is available to you, so you can see here that they break it into a couple, which is, you have to maintain, so we're the first column there, if we apply, you discontinue contact tracing and test and stay, you do symptomatic testing, you don't do individual contact tracing, you do weekly at-home tests with self-reporting, and you begin participation January 24th, and then students, January 31st. So we have a model in place, you know, heading into the first week in February. Questions?
So my question is, pretty much, the system that we have in place will go away. And that, if I understand what, what was written up there and what you just said, is that all we have left in the school is symptomatic testing. So tell me how that works. The way I understand the, the phrase is simply, somebody gets sick, and the, whether or not they, they came to school sick or not, based on, quote, at-home testing. So the first, the first opportunity that we have is that somehow or another they got sick with the symptoms of, of this, of COVID. So do they report, say, to the nurse? Is that, they self-report to the nurse?
Yeah, that's a great question. So typically, for example, currently, and I'll keep my phone close because sometimes Judy will text me her thoughts, typically what happens is you do, like, I've been helping with test and stay at a couple of the buildings in the morning, and typically, in the time, you might have a student who comes down who feels like they, you know, are stuffy, or they don't, they, they might have a headache. And so if, I mean, they're little kids, oftentimes, they might mention a symptom, and so the teacher then can send them down and say, why don't you go ahead and check them? The vast majority of our students aren't involved in test and stay, again, that's going to be in targeted pockets. And you might have a classroom where you notice a little person seems to be coughing a lot, or they seem to be, you know, sniffly, you'd say, you know what, why don't you go down to the nurse, and they can check. So it's, it gives you a monitoring structure, and it's one we're currently using now. Typically, I mean, most parents are and are working to keep their children home when they feel like they're demonstrating symptoms. You might have a student who, you know, didn't particularly demonstrate them at home, but might be demonstrating them at school, or develops a sense of, you know, not feeling well, and we pick it up. So it gives us a backup, is really the goal of the symptomatic testing. We have had teachers who've come down during the day to say, you know, I felt fine when I got here, but I'm just not feeling well now, can I do a check? So it gives you a backup structure, just another layer of mitigation. And then you might have students who aren't participating. So here's, here's the other thing, you've got a strand of people who opt in, who will participate in the at-home testing, and if they come up positive, they report to us and they remain home. They become the reporting structure that we do weekly, remains the same of the totals that we receive. The, let's say somebody doesn't opt in and isn't doing a weekly test, you know, you might have a triggered symptom that makes you test at school, and it gives you another layer of mitigation to pick up, you know, those that might not be participating. I think the state's design is that they think that they'll have a healthy number of people that move quickly into accessing the testing, and use it as a framework at their house, and other people who will add in over time, you know, as they see the model working. So currently, I would say the nurses could give us a report, and I'd be happy to, of kind of like, who they see during the day who gets sent down for a symptomatic-based test. But we've been running that parallel to the test and stay, kind of the whole time.
Is the assumption that the, that the students in school continue to wear masks?
So currently, across district, as you know, after lots of discussion, we are all currently masked, and the model right now for DESE basically remains that the anchor mitigating feature will continue to be masking. And then the option that we'll continue to run through that will be the offboarding mechanism for, for districts as they get to still available options to apply for flex masking. I think most people anticipate will continue to be a framework that moves with us, with people applying when they feel like their numbers stabilize. So, you know, we are already currently in a place where you have two schools who could do that, and you know that you're going to monitor it until you feel like it's a relevant conversation to have again, that they might move back into flex masking. The model, according to DESE, remains in place, or any district, anytime, can still move to apply based upon their vaccination percentage to offboard, utilizing the same mechanism that we did for the other two schools. I would say, honestly, I think most districts are just in a holding pattern until they see the trajectory of, you know, what they anticipate hopefully will be the peak and the decline of the numbers that we're seeing with Omicron.
So basically, not only is this, let's say, the, the new norm relative to what happens in school, but with the home testing and the availability of, of, if you will, free test kits, it basically dismantles all the information that, let's say, the local Board of Health, and for that matter, the state's Board of Health is going to have.
So, interesting. I think that what they're finding is that they've already lost control of that because not everybody reports their at-home test. So if somebody does an at-home test, they don't necessarily report it to DPH, they call us. So during the holiday break, as a sampling, I was running the contact tracing with the nurses, and, I mean, while the nurses took a break, I was running that with the principals. And you would get an email or a call from a parent saying, my child, you know, popped up at an at-home test positive, FYI. And so we would do the contact tracing loop. And then I was also getting information on a list of students from DPH, or from the Board of Health, where they had showed up in the system. So if somebody went and got a PCR, or they reported to their physician, they would come through the queue in that way, which, again, is the Board of Health and the Department of Public Health mechanism. Our numbers will, will be reported to DESE, not to DPH. They will interface with each other, but our reporting system is such that the design of the model is that the P, that the, the at-home test gives us school-based data, lets us be responsive, and the Board of Health will see our numbers as we, you know, share them in the chart, as you see, to, to DESE.
What's interesting is, on the previous table that you put up there with 136 positive cases, that's a 3.5% ratio within the school system, which is pretty low for this period of time.
Yeah.
So I guess what's interesting here is that if you step back a little bit from what we just discussed, basically, the country in this process is basically saying, well, if you're sick, get better. Because there isn't going to be a tool for which there's going to be a management capability at the state level, or for that matter, at the local level. It's basically go back to, to life as it was.
Yeah, there's an, I think.
To you to test.
Right, so there's a range of, there's a range of, you know, there's a range of public health growth taking place. So when we look at the trajectory of public health, you know, there's been times when you can check for a flu, but you have to go to your doctor, and they check you for the flu, and you find out, was it the flu I had? I did, you know, you might not know, you might have been sick, because, sick for 10 days, you might have really been ill, and you think you had the flu, or you did, or you didn't, unless you go to your doctor and get a test. With COVID, what we've seen, and what's interesting in this, is, is an aspect of public health that is now personalized with a home access, increased for the masses, giving us, you know, people self-control to kind of do general diagnosis, and then direct how, you know, their severity of response, right? So I think it is an interesting evolution. I think, you know, how Department of Public Health will gather that data will be interesting. I mean, you notice now, for example, they've also used the wastewater for their general benchmark, which I thought was a very, you know, also kind of a, another way that they respond to, like, they track that number, which they feel, you know, is a benchmark that gives them good data as well. So it's just an interesting evolution of understanding public health. The idea of, you know, as we've talked about, many countries have always used masks much more flexibly than we did in the US, and now you see a change in norming. I think you'll see masking continue with flexibility for people, like, when I fly, I'll wear a mask, or going to doctor's offices, it'll probably become a norm. So, you know, those are things that just become a change, and I think we're kind of in the middle of it. I would say it's interesting, if I wasn't so tired of it as we all are, it is fascinating. I think we'll look back on the trajectory, the evolution of the public health, and the question is whether or not they'll start to do more of that type of home-based checking so that families have better data around, you know, keeping their child at home, or going to daycare, or, you know, just whether they're going to work at home that day or go to the office based upon what their at-home tests show. Like, I just think it's just going to be an evolution that'll be interesting.
Well, I listened to the Board of Health meeting last night. They seem to be recommending the testing-at-home program. I'm not sure that they knew that the track, the contact tracing would end. It sounded like there was discussion about it appearing in other school districts across the state, but I'm not sure that they knew that it was part of this program to no longer contact trace within the school. But they seem to recommend it, and that they're meeting January 31st with only one agenda item to discuss their mask mandate for the town. And then they meet again on February 15th. Just, I was, thought I would put it out there, since this is our discussion about this program, it sounds like the next evolution for us. I, I am curious, are all school districts that apply for the program accepted into the program?
Yeah, yes. And I think it'll be interesting to see, we'll get data starting tomorrow. I mean, I know that they'd already had people that had applied, and, you know, it is the only mechanism by which DESE and DPH are providing an offboarding of the model that people are currently in. And so structurally, you know, I think as people find they can't manage the volume or the, or the sense of, again, purposefulness to the fact, if 98% of the time you're pulling all negatives, you know, and, and you're looking at the value of your time and energy and scope, you'd rather be able to actively do the on-the-ground nursing that's kept kids healthy and well, and the mental health interventions, and the things that nursing does that keeps our, our populations safe, those things get displaced by test and stay. And so we have to make important values decisions. As you say, you look at our trajectory of numbers, you know, where do we want to place the value of time and energy? So those are the pieces that will guide our, our next set of decisions. I think that, as I said, I'll meet tomorrow with the Superintendent's Advisory, I'll do the general applications, we'll let people give us options of interest for participation, and then we'll start putting together an FAQ.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, just a comment, as the severity of this literally goes down, I'm at 136, I'm wondering how many were even hospitalized or even CSI doctor. So, so we, we should consider where we are in the cycle, and not, you know, like you said, the other aspects like mental health, which is, which comes into focus now. I'm all for testing at home, you know. Yeah, overdoing, yeah, I mean, my daughter is in high school, and we get emails about contact, pretty much ignore it, you know, that's all.
Right, I mean, I think the.
At that stage now, a year back, yeah, we would have freaked out.
Well, right, I think that the public health trust is based upon the information you're getting being relevant, right? And truthful and clear. So public health trust remains essential to the framework of being an open and busy society, and the messaging we send has to have relevance and clarity that people feel is weighted properly. So, you know, I think the way we're messaging and the way we're contact tracing doesn't match the weight of the impact when you're looking at 98% of them all being clear every day. So I think parents see that, I think students see that, and it merits a change from us.
And I think this just goes back, I know this was stated at the Board of Health meeting, but very little transmission happens in schools. Schools continue to be a very safe place for people to be, for adults and children to be. And I feel like the at-home testing can just add to that safety, meaning someone isn't feeling well, and they wake up, and maybe there is an adult at home by the time they leave for school. And so they get to school, and maybe they're still sniffling and stuff, but if they can test at home right when they wake up, when the adult is still there, they don't have to come to school with the sniffles.
Right.
And be tested at school.
Right.
I think it's, it's smart of the state to, this is just another phase, an evolution, and how we learn how this works, and we've all learned to monitor our symptoms, and we know what to do.
They indicated, they indicated that this model is set to run through April 1st, April, so April 1st or April 22nd, guaranteed through April 22nd structurally and, you know, organizationally, at which point they want to let people know that part of this model is continual evolution, and that it will be, you know, assessed again. And the other piece of that being that moving with the transitions such as these mean that we can draw from each other across districts and information and structurally. So I think the timing is right. I mean, again, we decided not to abandon contact tracing and test and stay when pretty much all our partner districts around us already have. And I think, you know, moving in this next directional phase will let us draw from each other as colleagues, and just what their implementation is like, and it give us some kind of data comparison and practice comparison. So, you know, that'll be part of process in the next week, and, you know, I'll probably call some people tomorrow just to check in on how quickly they're moving, that type of stuff, and I can keep you updated.
And we can contact trace if we want. Like, if there's something pops up that's strange, we can do it if we want.
If we had a question about something and we felt we needed, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right.
Strongly recommended. Right. It says strongly recommended to discontinue contact tracing.
Yeah.
And the test and stay.
It's always an option.
Right, right.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for all that research. I know it's been a lot of information coming out. You spent some time on a webinar today, so I appreciate, it's a lot to take in. All right, we're going to look at a, our first look at the school year calendar for next school year.
And here it is. I, so, let's see, every year Andrea and Donna and myself look at the calendar and find things, and then we release it to the school committee. And, you know, we find some errors after we look at it, and then we send it out and we think that we have it perfect, and every year somebody finds something. So Sarah Delay found a few things before today's meeting that we had to clean up. But in general, the, you know, at this point, the calendar doesn't have our half-days listed in it, but it does have our full PD days, and it has all the, you know, national state holidays listed in it, and the vacations, and where they would fall. And so in the fall, at the beginning of the year, we always have, there's the Jewish holidays, there's Diwali, there's, you know, various other things, obviously, like Labor Day and Veterans Day, et cetera. Their, Diwali this coming year is on the 24th, so it's in October, it's on a Monday. So currently, we would be open on Election Day. And that's a decision that was made when we went with Diwali in the fall. And, you know, we had luckily at the presidential election a couple, you know, last year, Diwali was on the weekend, and so we could close on, for the presidential election. But if it was a busy election, we would have to reconsider that. So one thing to consider, because the 24th is on a Saturday, and we're always closed on the 24th. And the 23rd is a date for you all to discuss as a day when we could be open. And, you know, so there's, the 24th is a holiday that we have to give to our 12-month employees. So they're guaranteed a weekday that would be off, and we could move that from the 23rd to the 27th if we wanted to, because they're also given the 25th, they have to be given a weekday off too. So they're entitled, the 12-month employees, custodians, secretaries, for two days off. So we could move that to the 27th instead of the 23rd. We put the 23rd there as a closed day, thinking that many families will not come to school on the 23rd, because they would want to travel and be wherever they may be spending time with their family, they would like to be there by like, the 23rd. And so travel on the 23rd so they could be there and spend the day on the 24th. That said, you know, I recognize the debate will be, do we open on the 23rd? Do we have a half-day on the 23rd? So it's entirely up to you and the impact that that day and whether we're open or not has, as you all know, is coming down to the end in June, is like, with no snow days, our last day of school would be the 20th, which is a Tuesday. So Juneteenth is the Monday. And so if we didn't do the 23rd, then our last day would be the 16th. And there are people who will try to make the argument that we will not have a snow day, so it will not go into the next week. And so this is where you get to use your crystal ball and make a decision as to whether or not, you know, there's going to be a snow day until, and we're definitely going to go into the week of the 19th. But, you know, when you think about the 23rd, I'm sure you're going to be thinking about the week of June 19th. And that's the school committee's prerogative to, you know, try to figure all that out and, I guess, prerogative and responsibility. So I don't know whether Amber, if you want to add in on any of it all, but those are the sort of highlights I can think of that need to be pointed out.
I think we got some good grabs today on the different holidays off and made some adjustments. But I think the 23rd is something, you know, for you to reflect on and for us to discuss. I think, you know, providing 180 days of strong, robust instruction is our targeted goal. I think our faculty is very committed to that, and I think there are certain days across the trajectory of the year when it can be very hard to provide that. If you have high absenteeism, you have young learners heavily distracted, you know, our high schoolers are more diligent, you can kind of hold their feet to the fire in that sense, and they will stick with you. But it can be a day that feels like a very, very long day. And I think the travel impact, I mean, I've experienced this in other calendars, the travel impact of the 24th being Christmas Eve for a lot of families mean that they're going to use the 23rd to travel. And that becomes complicated for faculty as well, and we need people on the ground and, you know, to make sure we have a productive day. So I think it's a thoughtful discussion to have. I think the value-based discussion of which was a more productive day versus the one in June versus the 23rd, I'd say they're negligible in terms of equality for trade. So you might as well get the goodwill of the other day on the 23rd being certainly something that, you know, faculty and I think, and I think families would appreciate in terms of that flexibility.
Yeah. The last thing I want is, as a parent, to know that office is closed, but I had to stay at home because the schools are open. I would keep 23rd off.
I think it's just an issue, because this is, this happens every, in the cycle of the calendar, where we're coming up on the shortest December break one could ever have. You know, like in the past couple of years, if it's on, if Christmas and New Year's Day falls on a Tuesday or a Wednesday, you get a much longer break. But this is now, we're to the point with the shortest break possible. Sarah?
I would make a case to do at least a half-day on the 23rd, because as Amber said, the end of the school year productivity might be negligible also. But if you do a full day off on the 23rd, then I think people tend to shift anything they would have done the 23rd to the 22nd, back one day, and leave that day instead, or leave, you know, later that afternoon, or do a half-day on the 22nd, it just gets shifted back a little bit. So I would argue that at least a half-day on the 23rd would work.
I agree with all of you that the 23rd should be a holiday, whether it's a half-day or a whole day. I like Raghu's idea and statement, because I think it's true. If that turns out to be the corporate holiday on the 23rd, and families are home because of not having to work, they certainly don't want to be hanging around for the school day and before they can go about their business.
Yep. Or if you're home getting ready for the holiday, you appreciate the school day out there for the last minute.
I'm going to side with the faculty on this one. It's a long day, having taught myself for many, many years. It can, it's-
Right, it is, and it doesn't matter when, like, the 22nd then will be a long day. It doesn't matter when, like, any day before vacation is a long day, we can all admit that. But Daniel, you brought up a good point about the 12-month employees, and so if the 23rd is a half-day, would it be like just a, it would be a half-day for students, full day for 12-month employees?
Can't do that.
Yeah, no, that's what it would be, a whole day, a whole day for-
Or would you do a half-day on another day for the 12-month employees? Anyway, it's just some, it's a-
I think to be discussed, I think you would have to give those, I mean, that's custodial staff, those people that have to be on site.
They'd have to give them on the 27th.
You'd have to give them on the 27th.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
But just think, I mean, the opportunity here is for anybody who's listening tonight, that we're going to hear about whether it's the 23rd or not. So, you know, within another week, we'll have a lot more comments than just what we did here.
We still do, like, have sporting events on the 23rd. I know this year we had basketball games, sometimes there's hockey, sometimes there's winter sports on the 23rd. I don't know, maybe if it was a Friday, it wouldn't be scheduled, but I know this year it was a Thursday, and there was a full slew of basketball games at Westboro.
I mean, typically, we try to support building the schedule, you know, against what people know about that. I would imagine with that being literally the Friday before Christmas Eve on the 24th, you're not going to find a game schedule, they're going to try to, you know, give people transition, hopefully. That's my recommendation, but, you know, again, we'll see.
Good to talk about.
I'm in favor of the half-day on the Friday, mainly from feedback we received from this year, which was, I realized that was also a Friday. No, it was a Thursday.
It was a Thursday.
This past year, it was a Thursday, and it was a full day. There was a lot of feedback that perhaps that should have been a half-day. So I guess my thought process is, it should be a half-day, because I think it's a heavy day, no matter what, right before vacation. I have actually another comment about March.
Yep.
Can I move us to March? Is that okay?
Yeah.
I called the clerk's office today and spoke with Wendy Meckel, because I was curious about the change in local election date. It changed in the bylaws when the federal, when national voting happened on the same day as local elections. So that now, local elections are the second Tuesday of March, instead of the second, first Tuesday of March. And so when I was looking at this calendar, I thought, after February vacation, if we want two full weeks of solid learning, we could potentially move the professional development day from the 7th to the 14th. And that would be the local election day. And why is that a good idea? It allows, if there's snow in the parking lot, which has happened in the past, then the parking situation is so bad when we have a school day and a local election, because there's not enough parking for voters, and we wouldn't want to impact that.
Although, our local election in the past couple of years has been at the town hall.
But this year, it's actually at the high school.
Okay.
And so I think the idea was, she wanted to separate the national versus the local. But, no, you're right, last year and the year before, they were at town hall, but I guess it's always-
Certainly, no, I mean, I think it's a discussion, then a take back, and we meet with principals tomorrow, so we can kind of look for blind spots on that. I certainly think there's no, you know, a huge power con, I would move the, I would move it to the 14th then, if, you know, we felt we could. It certainly gives us, like I say, yeah, it gives us two full weeks before that PD day, and I think that that's workable as well. We could, yeah. Good catch.
Well, it was my fault this year. I need to take full responsibility for the March. Oh, that's a good discussion for us to kind of reflect on this and think about it, gather some feedback. What are our next steps? Are we looking to vote on this at our next meeting? Or is it, I feel like we're looking at this a little earlier than we have in the past, so.
I agree that it's earlier. It's entirely-
And to get calls, because people are booking things, and I think that given the life that people have been living, we're going to see an increase in travel.
Yeah.
So I think, my feeling is doing it earlier is advantageous for all of us. But you can review it till you feel you're done. So I think you're going to get feedback from people, and I think that's good. We certainly, you know, you'll hear from people, and that will help us, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, sounds good.
I appreciate that it came early. We, this is the first year where there hasn't been this outcry of where is the calendar?
Right.
Because that comes somewhat time around February, when people are thinking of February vacation this year, they start to think about it for next year. So to get it out early, I think is, would be good protocol for the, you know, future. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we'll move on in our agenda to an acceptance of a donation to the Borough Program. We were doing a lot of these, it's so nice.
Yes. Excuse me, yes. So this is another anonymous donation to the Borough in the amount of $200. And it is, I think the best way to describe it, it's unrestricted, so it's general use. And again, as you noted, the Borough is receiving a lot of these, so we wanted to thankfully, you know, graciously thank everybody who's doing so. The donations go so far in related to the use and the ability for the Borough to continue expanding their programs and not only serve the students but the community. So the district is extremely, extremely grateful for it.
I'll make a motion to accept the anonymous donation of $200 to the Borough Program.
Second.
Any other discussion, other than to say thank you? All in favor? All right, so-
Thank you.
Yeah, we thank that donor, thank you so much. And then our last agenda item, our capital project items, just a review of this, and as we look at our budget summit coming up next week.
Thank you. So I think you can certainly review this presentation as one of the pieces that will be important for us to be knowledgeable of as we come into the budget summit next week. I think that the piece that I want to emphasize, a couple talking points, just a couple reminders. We have four projects that came forward, and they're currently under review and discussion with the capital committee. Currently, it's my understanding that a favorable rating is anticipated on the Armstrong Playground article, the High School Chiller article, and the Armstrong freezer, with a recommendation to push the Hastings roof out an additional year, given what we know. I think, again, we haven't heard all of their discussion points, and Steve certainly can weigh in, but given what we know about how bid process is working and cost of work, I think their hope is that we'd get a better advantageous number and opportunity to space out some of the expenditures against other options that are in the total package of capital items coming forward through the town of all the other departments. So as we think about our budget and what we'll be bringing to town meeting, those three items would come forward through capital. I want to talk about the High School Chiller system for a second, this is a point of update, and I'll move into, see, okay. So for a talking point, I think it's important to remember that that $1.5 million project is currently also proposed for ARPA funding. It's an advantageous project for that. It would require that we go out, you know, for design and additional bid work if we get the money. I think that the discussion on capital, and I think will be an evolution between now and town meeting, is that how we propose this particular part of the capital, this article, would be to defer expenditure until we see if it receives the ARPA funding and revert to the warrant vote for use as approved, were it to then, you know, not flow in through the ARPA funding model. I think that's, you know, an interesting approach, but the ARPA funding is a unique and kind of evolving. It's a big pot of almost $6 million, which is impacting the cycle of capital in really advantageous ways, but I think it's making challenging for that committee to kind of stage, as we come into town meeting, how we want to manage those articles. I certainly would be in favor of that. You know, Dave and I are going to continue to meet with the capital committee, I think they're going to try to meet again, and working with Christie and Kim Foster, just to look at like, how to make sure we prepare thoughtfully for how those things get articulated as they come out of capital. And then we would be preparing a presentation to back up questions. I do think that I want to make an interesting note here, because I had a conversation that one of the things we should consider about this project, where it voted, is to have a discussion about whether or not we should consider heat pumps as a core option, as opposed to the current design model, given the trajectory of work with Sustainable Westboro and different things. It certainly, whenever voted, is something that we will then circle back to a subcommittee of discussion and bring forward thoughtfully. But I don't know, again, it was more a rhetorical question to me, but just saying, as we look for large items of purchases such as these, and trying to continue to get in front of most, you know, carbon footprint effective at working with those committees, I would want us to engage in whatever level of appropriate conversation, working with you and, you know, our own skilled people to kind of have that final conversation. Just a note, I don't think it's a relevant piece of the next step, but I think it's just an interesting, getting far enough in front of these projects to ask the green questions, you know, is something that we've provided some leadership on, and I think we should- we should continue to participate in thinking that through. So I think the writing of this, the language for this, as it would come forward, be a new experience, just to kind of, you know, walk the line there. And I think we would want to parallel it if there's any other articles coming forward that are also in the pool for ARPA funding. There might be some DPW articles, and so we would, you know, try to keep them parallel. I would, between now and March, I have time to run that all back through with you before we get those fully submitted. One of the other pieces, did I grab all that?
Yep.
Okay. One of the other pieces to look at, and the freezer's pretty much a standard article, really needs to be replaced. You don't want to wait till you're at failure with these. You've got no place for the food, you've got to run lunch, it creates all sorts of com, you know, issues. I think I'm really pleased they forwarded this one. And then this one will push down the road. I mean, that number, again, given where we are with, with estimates and things, I think, was a smart decision on the Capitol Committee's request, while they provided good value to recognizing the other things we've had that have come forward thoughtfully with long-term planning. Armstrong Playground, there's certainly a healthy discussion around people always feeling that we need to think about fundraising as a piece of the branch of works that are playgrounds. You know, I certainly haven't experienced, and we've talked about this, I mean, a playground is a fundamental tool of instructional framework in elementary school and should be funded through the public dollars of budgeting. However, we will work with the PGAs to, you know, they'll provide benches or a piece of specialized equipment that they use to enhance that, and we'll make a contribution. They can't carry the weight of that funding cost. And again, it's an equity-based discussion, whereas Fails is getting all, you know, new items, and Hastings got the new preschool space that provided some new play equipment. So we continue to look at keeping an equity-based framework. I think the committee clearly heard and recognized that, knows they've seen this article before, and respectfully see it coming back before them. The other item that I just want to put on your radar, that I think we'll discuss in general terms tonight, the other article that we submitted to ARPA was the gap in the funding at Hastings for the HVAC bid. We have a voted article of like 1.3 million, I believe, to start the cycle of rotating out and repair, and replacing the HVAC systems at Hastings, part of the project work that Steve has shepherded, that we've worked on over multiple years there. As a part of that, though, when we went out to bid, we found a gap in the funding of 1.8 million, it was like 1.5 or 1.6, it was like 1.5, I can't remember, it was like 1.6. So that gap is unfunded, and therefore, we submitted it for ARPA. I was just speaking with Steve about this before the meeting, indicating that what I want to, and what Dave and I discussed today, is that we would like to return to the Capitol Committee and request them to bring that through the Capitol Committee for approval from them, even if it has to be an independent warrant article, but it would be better if it comes through the fold of the Capitol process, which we've anchored ourselves in being strong members of the committee and participants in, so that people know it's within process. I spoke with Kim Foster, and we would be meeting with her, and I think she feels she can rotate that discussion back through the Capitol Committee so that it feels like a cohesive, clear process. I had a really good conversation with Christie Williams, and she feels like, again, this is an article that's been voted, supported, and recognized at multiple layers on town meeting floor, and you're coming back to fund a gap is certainly a practice that would also allow it to be an independent singular warrant article. So I think there's just really good process in our town. I continue to feel like, you know, we're members of a really dynamic and well-thought-out team that's using good process. So we're going to try to work that process forward thoughtfully so that we arrive on town meeting floor with our articles in order for the best advantageous description and passing. I'd like to see that article also framed as we would frame the chiller, which was approval for the funding mechanism of a borough to fill the gap if ARPA funding wasn't actualized. So did I capture the highlights, Steve?
Yeah, a couple of things, because of the ARPA money during the discussions that we had at the Capitol Expenditures Committee, it was sort of like, well, there were no decisions. And I, if I recall, the amount of money that we're talking about that came from ARPA is 5.7 million. And, you know, all the players who submitted stuff against that 5.7, I think the total was somewhere around 13 million.
Yep.
And so the issue at the time was, who's going to get their piece? Obviously, a number of groups were not, given the fact that we only had 5.7. So the debate on, if you will, the Hastings article, as well as others, if you will, were floating around, well, if we choose you now, and then you get the ARPA, then we're going to have not enough money for somebody else in terms of the deliberation. So it was kind of a funny process, and that's the reason why I'm suggesting we go back to Capitol Expenditures Committee, you know, get the assessment of the group in terms of the, the need, the viability, the dollar amount, et cetera, and have it assigned where it belongs in the program on its own. Then if, in fact, it gets the ARPA money based on the way ARPA itself is written, then so be it, and others will benefit because the full evaluation of all the pieces that were before the Capitol Expenditures Committee would be whole, and the ranking would stand. And so if, if, if this was ranked to be part of the general need of the town to, and voted, and it dropped out because of ARPA, then the others would come up and fill the spot. So I think it's logical to go back with this presentation to the Capitol Expenditures Committee and, and get it into the queue in the way it should be, and see how it stands on its own.
And one of the, Dave is working with Bob, and probably you also, Steve, to confirm some of the pieces, although I think my working memory on it's pretty tight as well, just to put together kind of a tight memo that lays out the trajectory of the number of warrant articles that have attached to Hastings and the work that we're doing there, so that we can be clear and concise with people and create kind of the historical perspective. Because I think you get people that come to town meeting who are, you know, really committed members, who remember, wait a minute, didn't we just fund that? And so you always want to make sure when you're presenting that, and that's a particularly complex process. But what we know, when we look back at the Armstrong Playground, that if there's too many layers for people to follow, it starts to feel like something that they, if they question it, then they would just rather not vote it. So I think it's going to be important for us to have the support of the Capitol Committee around the understanding of the trajectory of that article. So we'll also create that memo and, and, you know, share it so that we've got, I think, clear talking points.
Interestingly enough, there were four parallel discussions that came out of the ARPA, not opera, discussion, of which the first one was, there's a percentage against the town's budget that's used by the Capitol Expenditures Committee to be able to say, okay, we can fund this amount. And the discussion was, well, the amount never seems to be adequate based on the percentage of the town's budget. And in particular, when you went down that route, the second parallel was, well, for those things that are really big-ticket items and absolutely have to be done, such as now a new fire engine, you're looking at, you know, over a million dollars for such a device that in fact, given the percentage that's in the Capitol Expenditures evaluation, there likely would never be enough money to buy a fire engine or an ambulance or something else. So what the town has done historically is to begin to fund in pieces that future expenditure, whether it be a fire engine or an ambulance. In the case of the fire department, the revenue is set aside from the ambulance receipts. But likewise, the school department has six buildings to maintain versus the town's two or three, four, I guess, well, the.
Almost, they're creeping towards parallel numbers.
Yeah, yeah, but, but anyway, the point being is that, you know, a different concept was being considered in terms of these kind of big-ticket items. It, it's out there, it didn't get any, you know, pros or cons discussion, but it's there. And then the final story is, whenever you're talking about physical construction or replacement of, of real estate, if you will, in this case, the school ventilation system in Hastings, the issue is, it's never less expensive in the future.
Right.
So the point being is that if these things are needed, whether it be the chiller that fails, or the freezer that fails, or in this case, a ventilation system that's older than old and needs to be replaced, even though the town's voted, I think, twice, maybe three times to do this job, every time we, we, we get to the point where we know something, it always costs more. And that's the reason why we have to come back this time and ask for more money.
I think that was Christie's point as well, is that this article has been supported and valued multiple times and needs to come to completion. So it feels good coming into town meeting that these kinds of discussions, and that's why I think the summit is very valuable, to give everybody the chance to ask those questions and have this kind of conversation, and come into town meeting as a bunch of boards that have all been well-informed. So, you know, I think process feels good.
I mean, one of the things we knew in the pandemic is that we needed more air in the buildings, and in most cases, we were able to do that with newer systems. But this particular building has very old equipment, and it's very difficult to do that. So probably time, it was time three times ago, it's time again.
It's time.
Can I ask a quick question about the chillers?
Sure.
It's a, so I'm, I guess I never really understood until reading a slide from this presentation that it's not just the chillers for Jim, it's all the chillers.
Right.
From that, in 2019, the other units reached their life capacity.
Right.
And because they're doing the other chillers to, for economies of scale.
Right.
You're adding those two, or is it two chillers? I don't even.
Yeah.
Two chillers.
Yeah.
To that other piece of it, which would only make sense.
Right.
Yeah, and the second piece of that is that it's time to replace the roof.
Right.
And it's better to put a new roof under these chillers because you can't do it afterwards. So that's the other trigger that comes with the fact that if you're going to do new chillers, the timing really got dragged out because the roof was all right, but it's not all right anymore, it's time to fix it. So part of the discussion at Capitol Expenditures Committee was, well, okay, how much of the roof do you have to do? Because the whole roof on that building also, well, half of it probably needs to be replaced soon, and this is part of that replacement. So the question was, well, do we have to do the whole roof? And the answer is no, but you at least have to do the, that part of the roof that's underneath the chillers. So now, it's a debate, particularly with the chillers. I think this is the third or fourth time that we've been talking about chillers.
We have, we've brought them up multiple times, yeah.
To repair them to the point where they still work, but they're nowhere near as efficient as they would be if they were brand-new machines.
And, and with all of those projects, I think the other thing to note, to give a shout out to Bill Gabbarino, you have one skilled man in the district who maintains all of our HVAC, air conditionings, heating, boiler, everything, two geothermal systems, and now includes a lot of solar. He is really a spectacularly talented man and does amazing work for us. We get both longevity and good, high-quality care of our equipment. So shout out to, to Bill and what he brings to this district.
And my other question is about the Hastings roof. Is it my understanding that the MSBA repair project had asked about the roof in 2017, 2018, and that piece of it was withdrawn? Is that what that was saying?
So when we applied to the envelope, we were accepted for MSBA, it would have been roof, windows, doors. It's, it's the envelope, everything that you get in the outside. We withdrew from the MSBA because, time, because it didn't allow for picking up the interior work at that same time. That's not the reason we withdrew, for the HVAC, it wouldn't do the HVAC interior. However, we withdrew because of the total package of discussion for the weight of the number of projects and how they were stacking up. And so we were just in the midst of gibbons, we had moved forward on preschool, we had Armstrong in the queue for that wing, and in looking at the weight of project load, their request was made that when we were developing that 7% debt model design, that we hold on that project. It was part of kind of a package discussion.
There was more. And the more was that when we expanded the building and spent a certain percentage of its evaluation, we were then subject to today's code. It wasn't that you just go fix the roof, or you go change a window, that at that point in time, based on, I think it was roughly an $8 million effort, which was, as Amber says, the roof, the windows, the HVAC system, and something else.
A geothermal.
A geothermal upgrade. Anyway, the long and the short of it was, we exceeded the percentage that the state allowed before you brought the whole building up to code.
Okay.
Okay, and we couldn't, we couldn't answer that question as to what else we had to do to bring it up to code at the time, so we had to withdraw. Because at that point, we didn't have enough money for other things that were now going to be required.
And we will, over time, fund the pieces of that total, you know, independently. And, and, you know, you make decisions as a community, and at the time, that was a smarter decision for us against kind of the larger goals of, of planning, so. But the money, and it doesn't get cheaper, and the work doesn't go away. So those things will continue to be on our list, and I think one of the smart decisions we've made is we need to draw back, focus, finish Hastings thoughtfully, and target our warrant work to get that brought to where it needs to be.
Well, thank you. That clarifies a lot. I mean, that's part of the story.
We tried.
Yeah, we're getting there, we're making progress. I mean, I think if you visit Hastings, you'll see the interior improvement, the cosmetic upgrade work, the geothermal system, the sprinkler system going in, like, we're making, and then we will do the HVAC, the roof, and the things that, that need to continue to happen there, so.
I, I just heard that MassSave is redoing its program to include heat pumps. Have we known about that?
I didn't get all of what you said.
Yeah, MassSave is redesigning its program to include heat pumps.
Good.
Right.
So there could be some.
I think our future, continuing to get far enough out on project-based planning, and because we do have, as Steve says, six important, well-used buildings that need care, to lead on, you know, the ways we can be thoughtful about that, so.
All right, thank you.
That's it for capital tonight.
Thank you, that was a good review and update on all of that. So the next meeting of the school committee is scheduled for Wednesday, February 2nd, which is Groundhog Day, I find fascinating. So we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second.
Ever. All right. This meeting of the school committee is adjourned, thank you.